The meeting, the October 15 meeting of the Board of Ethics is called to order. Are there any statements from the public today? No statements from the public. The other members of the board have the opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions or changes, modifications?
I will accept them.
It's been moved to accept the minutes. Second. There's a second. As there's no discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There is no new business today, so we're going to go right on into unfinished business. It is the informal hearing for petition number 201409 by Susan Tita alleging that Greg Henkel, a county officer, is in violation of Section 2-83A3 of the Code of Ethics because inter alia, he questioned the actions and behavior of Ms. Tita's attorney in his lack of decorum and disregard for public decency as embarrassed and humiliated me in front of the public eye. Just to make sure I have the process down, may I ask counsel, first we'll hear from Susan Tita and then from the respondent?
Yeah, whatever the board's pleasure, but this is an informal hearing, so that would seem acceptable.
Ms. Tita?
Yes.
Come on up with your counsel.
Okay. Thank you though.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, at the last hearing, the board had asked that we provide DVD with all of the documents, correspondence, meeting minutes that had took place prior to our last Board of Ethics meeting, so we did do that. The board had also asked that a DVD be provided by Ms. Tita, and that was not provided. So, just for your information, the information the board asked us to provide, what was that?
Did she get all the information that I was, that she verified it?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that all that information be incorporated into this record by reference.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the information provided, Ms. Tita, be incorporated in record as reference.
By reference. All right. Let me explain why I did that. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, discussion.
All right, I'll explain why I did that. The reason I incorporated it right by record, by reference, is because I am going to use that in my findings as part of my material, that's why I wanted you to have it first. But before I could use all that information, I must have it in the record before it could be considered, if you understand that. And that's why we're doing it this way. So that means that all that material you, that was sent to you, will be part of the record. Can you understand? Anybody else have any problem with that? Do you have a problem with it?
Only that I'd like to specify that the complaint against me was specifically for the July 3 meeting, and that any material submitted for any other date would be inadmissible.
That's not what we submitted it for. You should have a copy of those.
I have not gotten anything.
Do you want to postpone this meeting until you get a copy?
No, I'm good to go.
You ready to go anyway?
Sure.
Okay, let me explain what the materials were. The material is concerned communications between the board and the members of your commission as to what was happening and trying to get a hearing before this board. That's what those materials were. Do you understand that?
By the board, you mean you folks?
Yes. Your board is communicating with us. You understand?
Sure.
And therefore, you were telling us you were having a problem down there, and you were telling us what you're trying to resolve it. So I'm saying it was this communication going back and forth between us for those few months. So therefore, I want that part of this record so that I can look at it too.
And I would only add that communication is already in open record. It's not some specific communication that was, everything that we had was in the open record already. All that was done was it was collated, collected and collated and provided.
And I have that information as it was announced to the Planning Commission by the Planning Department, so, yeah, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I don't want, I'm against any delays. I want to.
That's what we're referring to. I want to make sure she had it too before we proceed.
Sure.
There is a motion, Floyd. There is discussion. Counsel.
I'm sorry, why don't you deal with your motion, but I was just going to ask that I be allowed to just provide and read for the record the documents that were submitted.
So there is a motion, Floyd. I think I need to repeat the motion. There's been discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There are none. Counsel, you had something?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, the documents that were provided to the petitioner include March 10, 2014, letter from the Planning Director to the Board of Ethics, the April 9, 2014, minutes of the Board of Ethics meeting, April 21, 2014, correspondence from this board to the Planning Director, Dwayne Kanuha, May 2, 2014, letter from Mr. Kanuha to this board, May 14, minutes of the Board of Ethics meeting, May 28, 2014, correspondence to Ms. Kauauchi from the Board of Ethics Secretary notifying her of an informal hearing, June 25, Board of Ethics meeting minutes, and July 16, Board of Ethics meeting minutes, August 13, Board of Ethics meeting minutes, and then informal advisory opinion from this board dated August 13.
Ms. Tita, you did recieve all this information?
Yes, I did.
Before I ask you some specific questions, have you had the opportunity to review those?
I've reviewed most of it.
Okay. Do you have any questions on what you reviewed?
I keep notes at those meetings, and I see, and I understand, and, you know.
On the information that we provided?
Yeah, it's, some things are not all entirely in there, and that's, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, they can't take it if you're vague, and they do their best.
At this point in time, do you have anything you'd like to say at this point? Also, I believe we requested if there was any of the video that was available.
Yes. I don't see her, she was in the room. The videographer, I had in my email what I thought was the actual taping of that particular meeting. So then, when I began to review it, I find out it was from the last meeting, the most current meeting. So then, I requested from her again to have, you know, the video and from that, this specific meeting that is in question. And nobody seems to be able to provide that. But I do have a witness that was at that meeting with me who is willing to attest to what was said, what was discussed at the meeting to substantiate what I'm saying.
And the meeting that you're referring to, is that the July 3 meeting?
Yes, the meeting, the meeting, yes.
Mr. Henkel, do you have any questions at this time? Do you have anything you'd like to say at this time, Ms. Tita? Or would you like to have your witness come forward? It's an informal hearing, so we're not super structured.
It's not structured. It's been suggested to me by counsel that I ask for a hearing on this. Am I right? Can I say what you?
This is an informal hearing now.
Yeah, I think they're inviting you to witness or to bring one.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
As you come forth, you're here to help Ms. Tita?
Yes.
Okay. As you have a seat, please tell us who you are, your name, and then we'll let you go ahead.
My name is Cynthia. My last name is McDonald, and I attended the meeting with Ms. Tita.
Okay.
Do you want questions?
Go ahead and speak up and say what you want to say.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot Mr. Stillman's name. Henkel. Mr. Henkel, that's the issue. I was there, he was extremely obnoxious. There was some discussion, and he got very upset and was saying that Jamie Kauauchi had lied, she had lied to the commission, and that they should hold her in contempt. He also made a remark about that Mrs. Tita had wasted, and I'm not, okay, I'm not sure exactly if this is the way he put it, but he said that Mrs. Tita had wasted enough of the good people of Hawaiian Acres' time, which led me to believe that he had made up his mind, you know, his decision was already made before she had standing. And another thing that really bothered me about this is that they let people testify about this issue prior to ever giving Ms. Tita standing. So in my mind, I don't know what's going on here, but the Planning Department pushed this through, Planning Commission gobbled it up, and Mr. Henkel was not at all happy about the situation, to the point where, in my mind, he was threatening repercussions against Ms. Tita's attorney.
Any questions from the board at this point?
I do. Ms. McDonald, when you say that there was repercussions that were being threatened, do you have any specific, anything specific, specific about that?
Well, if I remember correctly, he said that they were going to, was asking if they could hold her in contempt for lying to them. And like I said, I may not have the exact wording, but that's the gist of the conversation, and those are the repercussions that I'm talking about, that, you know, there should be something done because he felt she had lied to them.
Do you have anything further you would like to say at this time?
You know, Mr. Henkel was quite aggressive in the way he spoke at that hearing, and he repeated over and over that. Kauauchi had lied, she had lied to the commission, she, and it was, it just became where I felt like I was some kind of a, just a crumb that was there. He also, Mr. Henkel, went on to ask me, and I, you know, as I thought about this since I filed this complaint, he went on to ask me, "What have you done for Hawaiian Acres? Are you contributing anything to them?" And I thought to myself, now this is all said and done, what's the point of that question? And I did respond and I said, "Yes, well, I am doing something. I put my name to run on their board." And he was demeaning of me. He did not want to hear any more from me, and he said, "I've heard enough from you." And I actually, normally I behave, I try to behave responsibly as an adult and as a professional, and I answered him back and said, "Yeah, I get your point. I get your point." I mean, it just was, it was not, I didn't find it to be very professional at all. He wanted to push it through that day, and he said, "I've heard enough of this, I'm just, let's push it through." And it were not for, not Duane, but the planning person that had presented this in the beginning, who said, "No, no, no, we can't do that because we haven't given her standing yet." And he just went on to rankle with it and say, "Enough, you know, this has dragged on long enough, and this has been knocked enough," and then he told me, "You know, you've caused the good people of Hawaiian Acres enough problems." I mean, there's, there was no, absolutely no, "I'm on the fence with you." He had made up his mind, and it was a done deal, "Just dispose of me and move this forward." And I had not been allowed to have counsel. I found that odd too, from day one. The minute Ms. Kauauchi opened her mouth, she was stopped, and I was dismissed. Yet testimony continued to go on, and they continued to take testimony as if the whole, it was, to me, it's bizarre, there were no rules. And I am under the impression that every committee, every counsel, there is rules. There were no rules. I had not been given standing, or even standing was not considered, yet testimony was taken at every, every hearing. And so, I didn't know what to do, so sometimes I gave testimony, and sometimes I did because I didn't know, but I did feel as though it was a defeated situation. So I am personally deeply disturbed by the behavior of the Hawaiian Acres Commission as far as how they operate, and more so disturbed that one of the members felt he had been empowered and had the authority to belittle and humiliate me in public.
I'm going to ask you to stay there. Glenn Henkel?
Great.
Greg? I'm sorry. Greg, if you could come up, there's a chair here, and at this point, I'm going to ask for your response to the accusation.
Yes, first of all, I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting. I was at a planning conference on Maui, I couldn't attend. But I submitted some materials. Did you get that? It was the minutes of this particular meeting that she was talking about?
Yeah.
And my written response to her allegations. You know, I was wondering if you got those?
We did, thank you.
In response, well, you know, first of all, I'd like to say, I've served on a couple of voluntary board commissions, and I'd like to thank you guys because sometimes it's a thankless job, and I know, you know, what you guys go through, so thank you for your service to the county and the people. As far as her allegations, I've got the minutes to the July 3 meeting here. I spoke four times at that meeting, and in none of my statements did I come anywhere close to saying what she, what Ms. Tita said that I, you know, uttered. My first one, well, first of all, a little background, at the, excuse me a sec. This all started in January. At the March 6 meeting we had, Ms. Kauauchi stated that she had submitted a request to the Board of Ethics for a ruling, and this is after we asked her if she had gotten a reply. She said she hadn't gotten a reply, that she had submitted a request, you guys, but you guys were taking your time and hadn't gotten back evidently. On April 21, we found out, this was from the communication from Mr. Kanuha to us, that the Board of Ethics never got a request from Ms. Kauauchi, that she said she had submitted on March 6, that day.
Just to make a point, there were some issues with mail and email at that time, I recall.
Okay.
In the very beginning.
But that was the information I had at the time. So in the, in the meeting, when we found out that on April 21, you guys hadn't gotten her submission, I said, "So Ms. Kauauchi has sworn in to tell the truth," and obviously she wasn't. Is that something that should be brought before the Board of Ethics in itself, other than the original issue, which was her eligibility? That was the first thing I said. The next thing I said, "I happen to believe that the farmers' markets and neighborhoods benefit the community," and you mentioned all the litigation going on in Hawaiian Acres. I was wondering if the people of Hawaiian Acres had a venue where they could gather together weekly and discuss issues that possibly some of the, so that possibly some of the litigation wouldn't be necessary. So I was asking if a farmer's market might help the situation there. The other thing I said was, "I'm a, I'm a member of a community association where I live, and it's the ones that show up and do the work that end up, you know, participating." She said a group of 20 had taken over. I took it as a group of 20 are the ones that are stepping up and doing what needs to be done for the community. Then, the next thing I said, "Is there any, is there any way we can allow the event to happen conditionally until it's resolved? Because I feel like the whole community is being punished for, by it not being allowed to happen." And that was a question for court counsel. That's all I said. Oh, wait, one more. To show that I wasn't biased on the issue itself, I was, I felt that Ms. Kauauchi was incorporating stalling tactics, and that's why it had dragged out since January, because I was anxious to resolve the issue. And the last thing I said was, "I would say, let's try to resolve this one way or the other, either for Mrs. Tita or the Hawaiian Acres residents." So I don't believe I was showing bias. Numerous people, probably a dozen or more showed up to testify in favor of the farmer's market from the beginning, and Mrs. Tita has been the only one that's testified against it. So I was weighing the evidence, the testimony, my own experience with farmer's markets, and my own experience with my neighborhood association, which I'm a voluntary member, and I'll stand by everything I said.
At this point, I'm going to ask members of the board if they have questions for either Ms. Tita or Mr. Henkel.
Mr. Henkel, how are the minutes taken? Is it like we see here, where we have the microphone and we have a verbatim, you know, typing or?
Yes, there's an audio record as well, actually. I don't know how that is made available to people, but the published minutes are, you know, they're a matter of public record, and they're sent out to the board members, and they're online at the county website.
But that was a good question. The question is how many minutes are taken? Are they taken much as you're seeing here?
They're, yeah, first audio, and then they're transcribed, I guess you'd say.
Thank you.
Who, do you have any questions?
As far as the minutes, all the other statements in the minutes, as far as you're concerned, the ones that you have in front of you are everything most accurate in those minutes?
Sometimes I think they're too accurate, because when I, I don't speak publicly very well, and sometimes there's a lot of mm-hums, and they even include those in there, which makes me sound dumb.
Mr. Chair, it's just for the boards and commissioners, my understanding that the minutes of the Planning Commission are taken verbatim, and the reason I say that is that the secretary also prepares for the appeals minutes, which I'm in the council, and they are all.
Okay. Mr. Henkel?
On the record, I'd like to state, put on the record, that Ms. Tita is communicating with her attorney by messages during this whole proceedings, that we have that on the record. Is that all right? Ms. Kauauchi, if you're present, if you're involved in this hearing?
Yeah, I'm not council record for Ms. Tita.
If you are involved in this hearing, why are you in this? Do you realize that?
I'm not council record for Ms. Tita. It's not for me.
Then what are you doing?
I am?
What are you acting as?
I'm a participant as member of the public.
You're a member of the public?
Correct. I'm not, I'm council record for Ms. Tita.
Go ahead, Ms. Tita.
You know, ironically, Ms. Kauauchi put a question, and I already have a question, I've already been asked that question. Where can I find those, the audio? Where? Where can I find the audio on the meeting? I believe I asked for that, and I'm told there wasn't an audio, so I'm perplexed. Where can I find the audio on the meeting? And who transcribes, or how do you know those?
So, I can answer that.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Chair, so my understanding is the secretary who will take an audio, she will transcribe it, and then the board will vote as to the accuracy and the acceptance of the minutes, and then after that, the audio is destroyed. The county is under no obligation to preserve the audio transcription. They use it merely for the secretary's.
So that's why I couldn't find it, and I'm told it doesn't, it's non-existent?
And that's probably because they don't.
So it's not trans, it's not put online for people to know?
Yeah. They only, so if you, you know, you would have to talk to this person, which is Norrie Kowalski, but I can confidently say that they would not keep the audio.
Yeah, so it's not put online as suggested by Mr. Henkel.
I didn't say the audio was put online, I said the minutes were put online, or if I said the audio, then I would have been saying, "I meant the minutes."
Do we have any comments or questions by the board? At this time, I'd like to thank both Ms. Tita and Mr. Henkel for being here. You may remain seated. The board will go into their discussion. Go ahead.
I've gone over all the material from both sides. I've carefully gone over. I've been involved in the communication between the parties, between that commission. The discussion and the materials that you read as to accusations of improper conduct of Ms. Kauauchi, that might have been a miscommunication, it might have been a mistake, I don't know, but we're not going into that. It's not our problem at this point. There was some miscommunication going on anyway, we know that for about four or five months, because we were hung up with this issue and we couldn't move forward. All right? What I'm saying is, Ms. Tita's, because I heard the transcript, her problem with Mr., I can't remember her name.
Henkel.
Henkel is probably, she represents his attitude or anything else, not what he actually said, but the way he was treating her. Okay, I'm going to try to make a distinction of what's going on here, what I read and what was actually happening. All right, by doing this, I'm going to create a scenario for Mrs. Tita. All right, Mrs. Tita? You know what I mean by create a scenario, right? Okay, Mrs. Tita, you're going home one day from work, and you have your 10-year-old daughter in the car, and you say, "I'm going to stop at the supermarket, and I'm going to pick something up real quickly and go on home." So since you're only stopping briefly, you leave your daughter in the car, all right? You go in the supermarket, you pick up your bread and your milk, and you go to, and you see the counter, it says eight or 10 express lane, eight or 10 items less, all right? You get in that lane, only one person in front of you, he's only got two items, all right? You say, "I got it made, I'm going to get out of here, I'm going right home." So, you get in the lane, and this person goes up and he checks those two items in, and you say, "I'm bringing them out of here." And what does he do? He stops, he says, "Wait, I forgot something." So what he does, he goes out to the counter, he goes looking around, and he comes back, and he brings back a bag of potato chips. He sets it on the counter, and he's just, okay, he's breathing aside really, put the potato chips down, and they check it through, and he says, "Wait, I forgot something else." So he go back out, and he gets a six-pack of beer, and he comes back, and he sets it there, and you say, "Good grief," and you're shaking your head, and he passes a six-pack of beer, and you say, "Okay, no." And he's, "Wait, I got one more thing on my list," and he goes out again, and comes back with a loaf of bread. By this time, you're not very happy with what's going on in front of you, right? You're saying, "My goodness." So finally, you're saying, "I've got to get out of this, this is a express lane," but he's, he's right. Eight or 10 items or less, he's only got five items. But he stops again, and he goes out again and gets a pack of cookies, and comes back a fourth time, and you can stand here watching this all the time. So what are you saying to him? He says, "Why don't you move it on, man?" All right? Were you being rude to him, or were you just venting your frustration with the situation? See, now you see what I mean? You watch, oh, it happens. He was, he was in a right, he had eight items or less, but the way he did it, the way he did this whole thing, created some degree of frustration upon him, upon you at that point. So you said to him, "Move it, man, you know, get, get moving." Okay, this degree of frustration is what I see in this, in this case, and that's what I see.
First of all, if I may, I would never say that to an individual. I have never done.
It's a scenario, Ms. Tita.
Oh, yeah, it's a scenario, but it, I understand that there are problems and complications, and not everything runs silky smooth in life. I deal with students. I deal with students day in, day out with every conceivable problem. I am extremely sensitive to words. When someone openly and violently insults me in front of people for no reason, someone who doesn't know me, but it sits on a committee as an individual who is to make a judgment over me, one way or the other, is this right or is this wrong, what's happening, and not look at my side of the situation, yet call me every, every, you know, nasty names, I am sensitive to the words.
All right, all I'm trying to show you is that any impatience on the part of Mr. Henkel was based by, created by the situation that occurred at that time, which was a long delay set over and over again. And then being that's the situation, I don't think he was being discourteous at that point.
But he is...
It was a reasonable amount of frustration on his part that I can see.
I understand what you're saying, but not everything runs silky smooth. And it was actually the council that made that, that created that problem itself by banning Ms. Kauauchi from representing me. I did not do that. I should not have been subjected to any name-calling or insults. I didn't do anything. I had no idea that Ms. Kauauchi would not be permitted to to represent me. Surely, when I paid her the money to represent me, had I have known that, I would have said, oh, wait a minute here, perhaps I should find someone else. And once she was in front of the commission with that and they just stopped her dead in their tracks, it is the right thing, the fair thing, no matter how long it takes, to resolve the situation for Ms. Kauauchi. Not, and as a professional, Mr. Henkel should be a professional and not take it out on me in these hearings and not jump to, we've got to get this done because there are people that have attended those hearings way longer than me with different problems. I know, I've attended enough hearings. I know one individual had a problem, they actually took the whole commission out to his, his site to show them what he had and what they liked or didn't like about it. Even in court, court cases drag on for months. It's just part of life.
Are there any further comments or... Go ahead, Mr. Henkel.
I'd like to address that. Ms. Tita used terms like name-calling, violence, and nasty in describing my behavior and I've just got to reiterate that there's absolutely nothing in the record that supports that and it's, it's not true.
I would say the record's bit sanitized.
So let me just ask about that then. Because you're pretty consistent, Mr. Henkel, in addressing with your phraseology in the record. Do you have a recollection in your own memory of that particular meeting? Or you're just relying pretty much on what, the record?
No, I have a recollection, being 65 years old and missing probably a few brain cells, I have a recollection of the whole episode from January on.
Okay. So when we talk about the specific one here, which was July 3, that particular meeting of the Wayne Planning Commission, are you, are you also saying that in addition to what the record is saying, that that's also your memory of what occurred?
Yeah, and I'd say the record's accurate. I'd say I probably was somewhat frustrated and that stems from the March 6 meeting when... But it wasn't with Ms. Tita or the issues of the farmer's market. It was my frustration lied with her attorney, Ms. Kauauchi. And at the, at the March 6 meeting, she said that she had, she hadn't heard from the Board of Ethics in response to her request. Later in that same meeting, she was asked, when did you submit the request? And she said, this morning. Well, of course she hadn't heard from you. She just, then she just told us that she only submitted it that very same morning. Then, then it was on the later meeting, you know, that we, that we found out about on the 21st, the Board of Ethics said that they hadn't even gotten the request that she had, you know, told us she had submitted. So I was, I was frustrated with the situation with Ms. Kauauchi. If, if there was some kind of misunderstanding between the two boards, I apologize to you, but I wasn't aware of that at the time.
So are we also to then say that Ms. McDonald is not being truthful here in front of this commission? Is she not being truthful? She's a representative of the, of the society here of good standing?
Sure, let me address that. All right. What we have here is we have the opportunity to listen to a variety of witnesses, right? We're having an informal hearing, so we're having this conversation, right? We already have had a judge here that's provided some of his thoughts on it and even provided a scenario for us, right? You won't have any of us say, I think I could say this, you won't have any of us say that anybody here is speaking untruthfully. I don't believe anybody here is speaking untruthfully. Does that mean, so what does that mean? That means that everybody has their own specific perspective on what occurred, right? Doesn't mean that there are lies being tossed around, but it does mean that you have different perspectives. Part of our responsibility as a board is going to then to try and address those different perspectives and see whether they fit into the ordinance that we have in front of us, the charter that we have in front of us, and how that then plays out. So I don't want you to go away from here or even being in here with the idea that we think that somebody told the truth and somebody didn't tell the truth. Personally, I think you're all telling the truth as you know it. It's our responsibility to try and figure that out.
Are there any further comments from the board or questions? Okay. At this point in time, if you could just remain there, just in case we have any, any further questions, the board will go into discussion. I'm just going to go around the...
Yeah, I, I think that...
This is among the board here.
The issue with the, you know, lying or having the timing of the, of Mr. Kauauchi's release of the county and therefore being allowed to, to be, to represent basically. And that was all clarified, right? So, so we, we know, we know now that that didn't happen, but Mr. Henkel, at that time, he didn't have any of that understanding. So he came from, from the perspective of, of what he had learned, it was that, that she, she was not allowed to represent that, that title. And that was all been clarified. So I think that's, I wouldn't even put that out there anymore as an issue because it was somebody not having all the information. And the information came, came out in its obvious, that, that was not the case. I can see where, where people came from different perspectives, you know, like Mr. Adams has said, but I don't, I don't see that there was, that the minutes certainly don't show us that there was any kind of evidence of what is being stated, yet we can also have certain ties and understand that when you're trying to fight for a certain issue, you know, that you, you personally are involved and also personally very sensitive. But I, I just don't see where we have any kind of documentation that, you know, that validates the accusation. And that's kind of where we're in a difficult spot, right?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, the reason I gave the scenario at that point is because I wanted to show that my viewpoint is that if there's any irritation or impatience shown by Mr. Henkel, it was directed at the situation and not at Mrs. Tita as being discourteous thing toward her, but she was addressing the situation with his impatience and that's what I'm thinking at. It's my position.
Do you have any comments?
I, I do. Let me just follow up then with what the judge was talking about. I frankly concur with, with our vice chair in total with what she was talking about now, so I don't have to say it. I'll go back to the ordinance that we're talking about, 283 A3. All persons shall be treated in a courteous, fair, impartial manner. And so when I go back and I listen to both Ms. Tita and Ms. McDonald and then also Mr. Henkel, to take Ms. McDonald's comments specifically, it was a period, it appeared that Mr. Henkel's mind was already made up. Frankly, that may have been the case. There's nothing that indicates, I mean, if I take a look at the minutes, I would probably concur as well, but that is not treating people, that's not treating them in a non-curteous or impartial manner. That's, he's made his mind up as a part of the conversation. The, the idea of threatening repercussions, holding the contemptful line, repeating again and again, those are the things that I'd have to go back to and see, is, are there any, is there anything there in the impartial records that we have? That's why I asked the question about the minutes, how they're taken. There is no indication that there's any reason for the taker of the minutes, the one that's transcribing the audio to have any particular, what's the phrase I'm looking for, to have any particular, believe one way or the other, in the situation, they're just going to transcribe the minutes. So what we have is, is very, a representation of what was said as we're able to get. And when I take a look at that, I don't find, I find, again, a frustration with a situation that has since been resolved and is not actually part of the conversation here, but I don't find where individuals were treated in a, in an uncourteous or unfair or like a partial manner, a non-impartial manner. So I, I don't, I don't think that I would find that the A3 has necessarily been broken. Can Mr. Henkel be loud? Can Mr. Henkel be forceful? I think we can, I think he's demonstrated that that's the case here. Are, is the one we're planning commission, as most planning commissions are, dealing with issues where emotions can run high, certainly. And so I would, I'm sure Mr. Henkel will take this under advisement. You know, you have to be cautious when you're dealing with matters of public concern and dealing with members of the public, who are also going to have their own emotions perhaps running high in terms of specific things and their opportunity to be heard and, but I don't necessarily find a violation there.
Mr. Andrews, do you have anything further to say? At this point in time, we've, we've had discussion. Is there, is there any motions or as to what we would like to do with the petition at this point?
If I could ask counsel, what are our options again in dealing with the petition?
You may, at this point, dismiss the petition or you may make a finding of no violation. In the, I'm sorry, in the past, where you have entertained an informal hearing, have taken testimony and I have seen you style it more as a finding of no violation and then the informal advisory opinion will articulate in more detail what was discussed versus dismissal. It's, you know, usually not after you have taken testimony and documented it. But your rules allow you to do either.
Yeah, all right. Why don't you do that?
All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion dismissal based on the conclusions I came to in my scenario that Mr. Henkel was impatient and frustrated. It was directed at the situation and was not in any attempt to, in any way be discourteous to Ms. Tita.
There...
Yeah, I would second that.
The motion has been made and has been seconded and so let's have some discussion on the specific motion.
Are we dismissing or are we coming up with a finding? Because if we're dismissing, then there's no rest, there's no reason for, there doesn't have to be anything, any reason for the dismissal, right? If you're gonna have...
The motion is to dismiss.
I would, the only thing I would potentially entertain without, my only concerns is that the record, we know that there's an audio version of this. We know that the transcription, that the minutes are a transcribed version of those, of that audio. We haven't heard the audio necessarily. I'm taking that the minutes are a fair representation of what's on the audio. And so that's where I'm going to be basing my, if there is, if, if the audio shows up and it turns out that that's not the case, then I wouldn't want this dismissal necessarily in prejudice to any future, but it'd only be in that situation that I would entertain. You understand what I'm saying?
I agree with that, but we could say it.
Right. I'm just saying...
Dismiss, I'm dismissing purging with no...
Without prejudice?
No conditions upon my dismissal.
Do you have any further...
We can do that, that doesn't prevent anything else.
Yeah, I would also go with sentencing because there's nobody now that's going to be following up. A, you know, it's been very well beat and it has been erased already, but because it's not a practice to keep it and because there's, you know, not even, I think, a clear guideline that we are allowed to get that and then compare it against the written notes, I would also go with the dismissed, that that's it.
I would just like to add that while this is being dismissed, rather than having the finding, that the, the minutes of this meeting in itself will delineate the reasonings behind our decisions.
That'd be some part of our conversation, though.
That is correct. Is there any further discussion? In that case, I call for a vote. The vote is to dismiss petition number 201409. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, hearing none. Petition number 201409 has been dismissed.
So, Mr. Chair, as our usual practices, I will drop the record for your review and then you guys can, at the next hearing, comment as to whether or not I've included everything you want or not.
That'll be fine. I'd like to thank both Mr. Henkel and Ms. Tita for coming before the commission.
Yes, I would only like to say that in the future, perhaps, the county consider very strongly not destroying the taped hearings, that they would keep them for a certain period of time.
Well, they're transcribed, the transcription and the minutes are certified that they're accurate and then the board approves them. So, you know, there are several steps to assure that whatever happened at the meeting is accurately reflected in the minutes.
So...
As far as I know, the young lady from Occupy Hito records all the meetings. She's, she was there at the meeting in question, so I don't know where that recording is, but there is a record somewhere.
We tried to actually obtain that because that would have been viewed today because that was something that we really wanted to take a look at because, as we all know, as was discussing.
Okay. Thank you all for your...
Thank you.
You know, it's a, you can't do that.
Thank you.
And thank you.
So maybe no power from the board?
At this point in time...
So, in the, in the dismissal, so you want me to...
I would have been, in my view, if we have a finding that, if we have a finding, then you would identify the reason...
The finding is a no violation. When they, in essence, it's, you're dismissing because there is no violation.
I know that. To be honest with you, I think that the chair actually has...
I think it's, in this particular case, if I may, we are simply dismissing the petition and that the, because there is no findings and there's no reason to discuss why there are, why we... why we came up with findings, the minutes of the meeting will articulate our discussion and the reasonings behind our dismissal.
I'm totally, I'm fine with that.
And I think that will be-
I don't care one or the other, but just-
No. Let me just say this for the record also. Allows us not necessarily to have to articulate more than just the common conversations we have. We are moving off of, in a situation, off of legal framework, and more to the evidence as a framework. And so the findings would be based on a legal framework. I mean, that's great, we can say that. But we're just talking strictly our view of what the evidence is to the dismissal.
And the thing is, you have five months of frustrating containment.
Lack of evidence.
I mean- That's only one paragraph versus five or six or seven or eight.
Yes, you are correct, counsel.
So, I mean, it matters to me what you guys want to do.
But I think about this in terms of, this is still a precedent still for-
Well, it is.
And so is there anything you can gain in the future from having taken my knowledge? Was there anything you can gain in the future from having this be a finding as opposed to a decision? And I need to worry that this was primarily evidence, there just wasn't really anything framework-wise that was going on.
At this point in time, the chair is going to move that we go into executive session for the reason to review the executive session minutes of September 10, 2014 and to consult with counsel as necessary. Yes, the motion has been moved and seconded, that we go into executive session. Is there any?
Well, you can then, no.
All those in favor, aye. We are now going to go into executive session. There is a camera to be removed from the-
I'm so sorry. Can we have a camera? I'm going into executive session.